Call this meeting to order and I'll ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I assume that the public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Passman makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Gerald. Without objection, we will approve the agenda. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Next, I'll ask for a motion for the approval of minutes from March the first of this year. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March of this year.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Passman. Without objection, we will approve the minutes of March 1st, 2021. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. First agenda item is a discussion regarding the elements of Rules and Procedures Handbook. This is just a brief update on how we intend to, how I intend to attack this issue. There are currently in our existing handbook, there are nine articles, and we will be taking those on, one, maybe perhaps two or more at a time. But today, we're going to be talking about what will amount to Article Number 10. It'll be a new article, and that will be addressed in Item Number 11 of our agenda, which is an ordinance to make permanent the previously adopted emergency resolution allowing for electronic and hybrid meetings and other matters related thereto. And in subsequent meetings, we'll be talking about officers of council, meetings and agendas, appearances, presentations, and positions of council, ordinances, correspondence, conflict of interest, travel and expense reimbursement, attendance at seminars, conferences, et cetera, and standing committees and ad hoc committees. So those will be, we look forward to discussing those in detail and hopefully approving updated rules and procedures in the not-too-distant future. Item Number 7, as a resolution to set forth uniform policy and processing responding to and tracking requests for public records in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act Code of Laws 30 dash four dash 10 at SEQA. I assume everyone's read the item in the packet, this resolution. Essentially, what we're doing is we're permitting hybrid, in addition to in-person meetings, hybrid meetings going forward. I personally think this is a great idea. There've been many times, I'm just speaking personally, and, but there are many times I've had to forego consulting arrangements over the years, and I'm sure I've lost.
Paul, I'm going to interrupt you. You're talking about Item Number 11, not Item Number 7.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. A resolution to set forth uniform, okay, I apologize. I was, you're right. So I'll need a motion, looking for a motion on Item Number 7.
I will make the motion for Item Number 7 to be sent to County Council for approval.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Gerald. We're in discussion on, on the Item Number 7, foyer, manner of dealing with foyer requests. Comments? Okay. Mr. Rodman, as you may know, sent around a spreadsheet for us to look at. And it's been in everybody's packet, so we've all seen it.
That's, Paul, that's for the loss discussion. That's for Item Number 12.
Right.
Ah, okay, thank you. So do we have any discussion on Item Number 7? Hearing none, without exception, we'll approve this. Are there any exceptions? Hearing none, this Item Number 7 is approved. Item Number 8, resolution to authorize the interim county administrator to accept FAA grants. I think John Rimbold's on here if we need to hear from him. John, are you on here? I guess not. Okay.
He is logging on now. Sorry, that's who I'm speaking with.
All right. I don't know if we need John, but he's standing by if anybody needs additional clarification. But I'm looking for a motion on Item Number 8.
I will be happy to make that motion.
Thank you, Joe. Second.
I'll second the motion. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Does anybody want to hear from John Rimbold on this, or have you satisfied yourself by reading the documentation included in the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I believe Tom Kevney would like to give you the background on this.
Okay, Mr. Kevney, you have, you have the floor.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Listen, the only thing I wanted to mention is that in looking at the AIS, I think it says that this matter is to come before councils, the council's next meeting on the 26th. We actually need it to be on council's agenda for the 12th because we need, council needs to authorize Eric to accept these grants specifically before April 17th. So if you'll just put it on for the council meeting on the 12th, that would be great.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, without exception, we'll approve Item Number, Item Number 8 on the agenda, authorizing the county administrator to approve FAA or accept FAA grants. Are there any exceptions? Hearing none, Item Number 8 is approved. Item Number 9, a resolution authorizing the settlement of claims related to the care environmental waste disposal site. By the way, I read that all of the material was attached, and there was a term in there that I wasn't familiar with. And the term is contribution protection provided by EDT. Does anybody, Tom, do you know what that is? Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Beth Partlow's on the phone. Yes, sir. Beth.
Yes, sir. That, that is a provision in the law that lets people who are all jointly and severally liable for contamination of a site turn around and sue each other. And so contribution protection provided by the government when you settle a claim, and it says, "We will not allow anybody to come in and sue you," even though that person, they contend that you are jointly and severally liable with them.
The way I read it, there's an apportionment of quote-unquote liability, and then, and the dollars are apportioned accordingly. Is that right? And so we're saying, like, let's say Beaufort County gets 23%. You're saying that somebody can't sue it and saying we owe 28%?
Correct.
Okay, well, that makes perfect sense. All right. I have a motion for Item Number 10.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
We need to vote on, we need to vote on 9.
That's what we're doing.
I heard him recall for a motion on 10. I'm sorry.
I just spoke, I meant 9. But thank you, you're right. It's 9. So we have a motion and a second on Item Number 9. We'll approve this without exception. Are there any exceptions? Hearing none, Item Number 9.
Will this be moved to council's April 12th meeting?
Yes, sir, it will.
Okay.
Item Number 10 is approval of intergovernmental agreements between Beaufort County, Port Royal, and the city of Beaufort, Project Burger, Glass, Garden, and Stone. Mr. O'Toole with the Economic Development Commission, is he on?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Okay. John, you want to go ahead and tell us a little bit about this?
Sure, and, and we have, we have Charlie Stone with my office and Perry McLennan from HSB on the call if there are any technical questions. But as you recall, we have been implementing FELOs as we've gone along to bring down the tax rate for manufacturers from 10 and a half to 6%. These two corporations, as we went through the process, they actually, for liability probably purposes, segregated their corporation real estate and business holdings quite common. So as a result, they fell into the range of SSRCs in order to get the SSRC, which accomplishes the same thing as a Felo. They need to be in an MCIP, and as we've gone through this process, this is our first time going through it, we realized that our communications had to be improved with the community. So within here, you'll see the intergovernmental agreements, and those also had to be entered into because there were some issues pertaining to the Burton Fire District. So everything's in order, and they are ready to go forward. Instead of going to third reading, it was recommended by Kurt Taylor, once we got all of these things in order, that we actually go to, back to second reading because the changes were substantive enough that we should give the public the second viewing. So this is recommended for second reading, if I'm not mistaken, and there are two attorneys on the, on the call to keep me on track if I've misstated anything.
Gary Morris on the call.
Perry McLennan is, is here in his stead, Mr. Somerville.
Okay. Any comments, Mr. McLennan?
I think Kurt summarized it very well. Thank you all for having me. We've been working with the county on these economic development projects, and these two intergovernmental agreements with, one with the city of Beaufort and one with the town of Port Royal are necessary in order to place these projects. Since, since the projects fall within the boundaries of those municipalities, these agreements are necessary in order to move ahead with the incentives.
Thank you. Members of council, are there any questions for either Mr. O'Toole or Mr. McLennan?
Paul, just a comment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think if, back at second reading, I think it'd be a great opportunity for the public to actually be able to describe what each one of these projects are, what they're going to do, that type of thing. Because I don't think the public's necessarily had that visibility yet.
That's good. That's correct, Mr. Rodman. Mr. O'Toole will do that.
All right. Are there any, I'll move this forward without exception. Are there any exceptions to Item Number 10? Hearing none, Item Number 10 is approved without exception. Item Number 11 is an ordinance to make permanent the previously adopted emergency resolution allowing for electronic and hybrid meetings and other matters related thereto. We've gotten a real education in the last year on the possibilities of virtual meetings. Personally, I was impressed, as I started to say earlier, at Item Number 7. I don't know why I did that. That I personally supported. It's going to help me a lot. There've been many, many times in my 15 years on council that I've had to forego consulting arrangements because I couldn't participate otherwise, and it has cost me a lot of money. So that's my personal sad story. But I'm sure there are others who have contributions they want to make, comments they want to make. I asked, first of all, let me ask for a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
All right, second. Gerald, did you make the second? You're on mute.
I don't know who it was, Paul. Someone went ahead of me. But if that person doesn't speak up, then yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. If there was somebody ahead of Mr. Dawson, I apologize. I didn't, I didn't catch it. So the first, the, the motion will be from Mr. Passman, and the second will be from Mr. Dawson. All right, we're in discussion.
I have a couple things.
Yes, sir.
From looking over this ordinance, you're saying that we no longer even need a state of emergency to conduct hybrid meetings, correct?
That's correct.
And then, is this open to all meetings, including actual county council meetings, not just committee meetings?
Yes, that's correct, and also boards and commissions.
And boards and commissions. I'm going to vote no on this, then. I strongly disagree with it. I think when we are in our council chambers, we should make that attempt. If we want to amend it where it is just committee meetings and boards and commissions, that's something maybe I could get behind. But I don't see how we can continue to conduct business online when we should be having our county meetings in person. Frankly, I was going to bring this up to county next week anyway, so I'm glad it's in our, in our executive session to be discussed now. So I'm going to be a hard no on that.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Is there anyone else that wants to weigh in on this?
Oh, Stu?
Yes, Stu.
Yeah, I'm where Logan is on this. I think for committees and so on, it probably works reasonably well. I think for main council meetings, given that they're published way ahead of time, and they're basically in the evening, I think there's a lot to be gained by us all being present. And it does tend to get cumbersome, particularly if you've got one or two people where you're trying to get their comments and let them vote, and are they muted, and the whole nine yards. So I'm, I'm opposed to it at council. I'd be receptive to it for all other meetings, including boards and commissions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rodman. Anyone else want to comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Herjand, yes, sir. I didn't see you there.
Yeah, thank you. I, like Mr. Somerville, also have a personal sad story. You know, it's an hour up and an hour back to travel to Beaufort. It is very expensive, you know, for folks who are working. However, I am not going to support this. Because frankly, you know, it's not about me. It's about, you know, us providing good government. And I think that for two reasons, the online meetings are problematic. Number one, we don't get the face-to-face interaction with each other, which I do think is important. And I think it's important to have that face-to-face interaction with the staff as well. You just don't get the same, you just don't get the same thing when you're on Zoom as when you're in person. So there's that. And then number two, I think that we haven't really had meaningful public comment in basically a year now. And public comment is very difficult. We work for them. They need to be able to provide us with meaningful, timely public comment, and they should be able to do it face-to-face. So for those reasons, I'm not going to support this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Herjand. Anybody else?
Chairman, this is York. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, York.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'm like you, Paul. I think with this new age, you know, we have the capability of having meetings. If you are way out of town, as long as you have access to the internet, you can be in a meeting. At the same time, I place a lot of value on being present so that the public can actually engage with, with us. And that we should never try to shun the public at all. So I would really love for us to consider a hybrid, but limit the amount of members that actually can be missing. So that if you had, say, at least three-quarter of the members present, you can have three of the members at a hybrid stage, which would allow those who, like yourself, Paul, are working to be in a meeting and stuff. But the emphasis will be placed, and I use, I'm just using three-quarter. It could be any number. But, but the majority of council should probably be present if we can. After this pandemic is over, I would try to do my best to be at public meetings, but there are times that I can't. And I'm like Paul, I was able to be a part of the council meeting out of town. And I felt that I didn't miss anything because I was there. So if we could kind of relax it so that at least have a hardcore number always present, and then on the first come, first served, those who got to be out of town or would prefer doing the hybrid, allow them up to a certain amount of number, and if there's someone who's abusing it, then they would have to stand in line, allowing somebody else to, who had not taken advantage of a hybrid to participate. So that's where I am. But I think we need to stay with the new era, the new technology, and the hybrid, I think, works well. Thanks.
York, do you want to make a motion at the committee level, or do you want to make your motion at the council? Or what's your, what's your pleasure?
To amend. I really left it there for discussion if anybody else. I would, I would love for it a hybrid where we have the majority, but I don't know. I think a simple majority may not suffice. So seven, eight, I think eight would be the number. So I will put that on the table as a motion that we have a hybrid, but we must have at least eight members present to move forward.
Bear in mind that we're talking about committees, agencies, boards, commissions, as well as committees of this council, so.
Yes, I do understand that. And I've heard from several members of the committee, and they, they, they love the hybrid as well. So I think it will fall right in line with them.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, is he making a motion? Then I'll, I'll second.
I thought I did, that we have at least three-quarter present, members present.
I'll second the motion.
Well, but I just, to be clear on the motion, this ordinance talks about a lot more than county, just county council itself. So if you, are you just limiting your, your amendment to council, and you're not speaking to any of the other bodies that are affected by this ordinance? Specifically.
Sure. I think, because that's the body that we govern. At least for council, I would, I would go with that, Paul. And I don't, I have not heard from other boards and commission on this matter, but I've heard from a few members that appreciate the hybrid. So, so if I'm just speaking for council, then, then it'll be for council at this time. Thank you.
All right. So your motion is to, to support the, the ordinance, but you want to require that council, which consists of 11 people, to have at least eight present on each, on each council meeting. Is that, that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is that eight people in person?
That's what I think Mr. Glover is saying.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Now, is that workable? That's, that's for discussion at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. All right, we have a mo, we have a, I'm sorry, we have an amendment on the floor to amend the ordinance with respect, with respect only to county council meetings. We require that at least eight people be present before anyone can be given permission to participate in the meeting virtually. Discussion.
And you got my second, Mr. Chairman? I'll second what.
I did. Thank you.
Stu has a comment first.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Paul, I, I think you might want to consider bifurcating the question. I think you're going to find probably almost unanimous for our committees, boards, commissions, agencies. And I, so I think the real question would be the second question of what we do for just our council meeting. So that may be a way to move through this.
Well, the ordinance, the ordinance speaks to all of those other bodies. So I mean, we can, we can certainly entertain a motion that speaks to only one of those bodies. And I think that's what Mr. Glover has in mind. So I, as I understand, the motion on the floor is that all of the other bodies, the agencies, boards, commissions, and committees of this council can, can be virtual, 100% virtual, or 20% virtual, or 80% virtual. But with respect to the 11 of us, there has to be at least eight people present before anyone can be authorized to participate virtually. So I think that's my understanding of it. Comments, discussion?
Mr. Chairman. I, I think what York has come up with would be a good solution in that people who are working every day, all day, for a living and don't have the privilege of being retired yet would be able to still continue to do that. And then it, it will allow, but it will allow the rest of us to be there in person, and we won't see abuse of it by this amendment.
Well, I can envision lots of situations where several members of our council are ill. Several members of our council are attending weddings or funerals or other critical events. And, and then you have somebody else, or several somebody else's are, are trying to make a living, earn a living, and they can't because they can't participate virtually. They're told, "No, you can't participate virtually because so-and-so, and so-and-so, and so-and-so are, are sick, and we have to have eight." So, so you have to be here, and the point of fact, the person can't be here. So the simple, the simple way it's resolved is that person cannot participate virtually. And I don't think that makes any sense. So that's my nickel's worth.
Mr. Chairman.
Can I chime in as well? Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. One of the concerns that I'm thinking about right now is we could potentially have members of council or of a committee who don't live in South Carolina for a large portion of the year, and who could participate from vacation homes or out of town or wherever. And that, to me, seems like it's opening the door for, for problems. I think we need to be really careful with this and how we address it. It feels to me like it's a slippery slope.
Well, Chris, what are you saying is a slippery slope?
Just the, the idea of having these hybrid meetings in general and moving toward, you know, electronic meetings. Like, you know, if, if you've got somebody who lives five months out of the year in Florida, that's a significant portion of the year that they're not in Beaufort County, and they don't have to be. They're still Beaufort County residents technically, right? And they're out of town, out of state for a significant portion of the year, and they're not in the community. People who serve the community should be in the community. So that's, that's one piece of it. That's just one piece. You know, I still reiterate what I said earlier about public comment and not having meaningful public comment, not having personal interaction with each other. I, I think this is just a slippery slope altogether.
So I have a question for Kurt. Kurt, the way this amendment is that we would have to have eight people present if, in fact, we declared that this was going to be a hybrid meeting, does that then say if we do not have eight people that can be present, we could not hold the meeting?
Well, that's where you get into what's the definition of a quorum, too. You run into two different concepts here. One is it can't be hybrid, I guess. I understand from Mr. Glover. If, or people can't attend virtually, let's put it that way, if there are not at least eight who are attending in person. But the meeting could still go on with just nearly a quorum, which is 50% plus one. So it's a different thing from meeting versus virtual meeting.
Okay.
May I chime in?
Mr. Somerville?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'd like to address the amendment. So if I am the fourth person who can't attend because of a variety of situations, essentially, I will be excluded from voting that night because I was last in line.
That is my understanding, and that is my concern.
Yeah, I understand, and I think that's just an absolutely crazy situation in 2021 when technology allows us to operate the way we are, and I think rather successfully. So I oppose the amendment. I do support the original motion to allow us to have hybrid meetings, and I strongly support it. And I have experience with meetings of council in the past where people were not, not in my tenure, not during the last two years, but when there were meetings and only eight people showed up. And the other three were able to call in or participate fully, but were excluded from participating because this rule had not yet been structured and implemented. So I strongly support the motion to allow hybrid meetings and I strongly oppose the amendment saying that eight people have to be there and three people, there's a limit of three people who can virtually participate. Because if I am the fourth person, you have excluded me from participating in this meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, could I speak to you?
Could I speak today?
Logan, I think Logan had his hands up. Am I correct, Logan?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. And York, you can speak right after Logan.
Yeah. So I have a, a couple of things. Um, I do understand, uh, Mr. McKellen's concern as well. You start putting limitations on things when you put a cap on there. Um, I would be more inclined to remove the council portion completely from it. Um, uh, Mr. McKellen just stated that over the last two years of his tenure, that there has not been that issue. Um, and, and I get the working aspect. I work 50, 60 hours a week and then do council on top of that, but you build your schedule around it. I know what I signed up for when I ran, um, just like the rest of us did. Uh, I, I still don't see how we can put a cap on council or even go virtual for council. Um, I, I, I just don't see how we can open up that door. Uh, I think we should be in person. Uh, I think we should have been in person a while ago, which I know a lot of you disagree with me on and, and you know, we've gone down that before, but, um, I'm still going to oppose both portions of these.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Uh, Mr. Glover, you had something you wanted to say?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, thank you, sir. Um, I appreciate.
You're next. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just want to respond to, um, what, what Larry just talked about. And I, I do agree with, with, with Larry with the newer technology that we should, um, be allowed to do hybrid. Um, but you know, the, the, the balance for me is really, um, I think as an elected official, um, I should be present, uh, as often as I can. And, uh, how do you assure council if you don't have at least assured number that they will at least meet the public? Um, I'm going to attend meetings, uh, as soon as this pandemic is over with. Uh, so that's not going to be a problem. It's never been a problem as far as I'm concerned with council. They've always been, um, uh, a good attendance since I've been on council. Um, but I think that with the technology, it allows people who may be out of town for whatever reason, the ability to, 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 to be at the meeting, to be a part of the meeting, participate in the meeting. And so I think that the hybrid must or should continue. What, what that number, that balancing number is, I don't know. I just threw eight out there. It may be too high, but I think I want to say that council place a lot of emphasis on their members being present to meet the public. Thank you.
Uh, Gerald, you had a comment, I think?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that, um, in my personal opinion, um, the virtual aspects of us meeting, I think has served us well during the COVID-19, um, uh, restrictions. And, and so as long as the, as long as we're dealing with the COVID-19, uh, issues, then I, I support us continuing the meeting virtually. Now, and at some point we're going to be allowed to come back into, uh, in-person meetings. And, and I think at that time, then there are virtual aspects of continuing the meetings, uh, need to be monitored to make sure that none of us are abusing us meeting in person. So I, I support, I support the, um, the, uh.
Main motion?
Main motion as is written without any amendments.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Logan, did you have an additional comment?
Yeah, just one more. Um, I, I understand what Mr. Glover's saying, you know, about it, it comes in handy, it comes useful and that it shouldn't lead to any problems. But unfortunately, I, I feel like we're already there that it has led to problems. Um, you guys know, I've been to every meeting in person. I also go to events outside of county council and other things like that. But we have people that have not gone to meetings in person, but still go to other events outside. Um, I believe there's actually five that went to an in-person meeting in DeFuski. Um, but yet some of those people have not come in person to our own county council meetings. Um, uh, that just rubs me the wrong way. I, I think if you want to stay home, I get it. We're in the middle of pandemic, then you stay home, you take your precautions. I'm all for that. But I don't think you get a pick and choose. And I think that's where we're at right now. And, and, and that's what sort of frustrated me about the slippery slope that Chris talked about.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Uh, Chris?
Uh, question for Kurt and then a comment probably. But Kurt, has ordinance like this been passed anywhere else in South Carolina and or contemplated and or passed anywhere else in the country?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman. I haven't done a survey to, to determine that. I know that it is, um, that the uniform ordinance that we're going by, the, the sample ordinance that we're going by is available to be adopted this way. Um, I'm sorry, I just don't know if it's been done yet.
No, that's fine. And I'm putting you on the spot. I, I realize.
Town of Bluffton has, has a permanent ordinance.
Town of Bluffton, County M C.
That's true.
Yes.
Cool. Um, yeah, thank you so much. And then, you know, my comment is I'll just reiterate. I, you, obviously we have the technology. It's 2021 where we can do this, but just because we can do it, you know, I'm very concerned with whether or not we should do it for a lot of the reasons of, um, you know, Logan's reiterated and, and, you know, all the things that I said prior. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, any other comments?
Yeah, I'm going to make one final comment.
Yes, sir.
The reason we are doing this is because we still have issues with COVID-19. Our county chambers can only hold so many people. We want everybody to be safe as we possibly can. We are in the midst of vaccinating the vast majority of the population. Within the next couple of months, hopefully the vast majority of the county will be vaccinated. We will be able to get back to some semblance of order. And everybody in this room who is participating now knows what our job is. We will be in person at some point in time. Once we feel comfortable enough that we have enough people protected within our community, we'll be back. There will be times, and I can assure you, I'm going to be one of them. There is a, uh, time in 2022 on an evening where we're going to have a county meeting. I already have an obligation out of town. This would allow me to continue to participate. So I am going to, uh, support the, uh, permanent ordinance. I am not going to support the idea that we're going to restrict how we're going to do this. I think we're all knowledgeable enough to know that we belong there in person and we will do it to the best of our ability.
Thank you, Mr. Passman. Uh, any further comments?
Yep, Paul, this is Mark.
Yes, sir. Hey, Mark.
And, and yeah, sorry, I was, uh, late getting here. Got stuck in traffic on 95, but, um, uh, if I go back and look at us in 2019, um, there were many times during committees that we were actually having to make sure that we had a quorum just for a committee. Um, and again, council meetings, we had no problem. Most people showed up and I plan on sending, um, just like Logan said, as many meetings in person that I can. I am willing to support this, um, uh, both for council meetings and for committee meetings. And the, the reason is, I think we've had more people participate in these meetings and be here on a regular basis and, and say what they think and been more inclusive by having, um, these, these virtual meetings than what was happening in, in the past. Uh, and if someone doesn't show up at council meetings, that's some, they're not representing their, their folks, um, as, as best they could. Um, and whenever reelection comes up is whenever, um, those people should be replaced if their, uh, folks think that they should. So, again, I, I think that this is, is as we move forward, um, I think that we've got more people involved. And I think this is actually the, the Zoom has, has helped to, uh, bring more people in and have more people attend every meeting. So that's where I stand on it.
Um, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, can I speak for once? Uh, is it appropriate, uh, or do we have to vote my motion down, uh, for me to withdraw my motion if the second also does so?
No, you can withdraw it anytime you want. And then whoever made, I guess it was Alice who made the second would have to follow suit if you wanted, as opposed to voting on it. It's your call. You want to withdraw it, then just, and then ask Alice if she'll withdraw a second.
I'll second if you want to withdraw it.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, I withdraw the motion, the amendment.
I concur.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're back. Thank, thank you, York. We're back to the main motion now. And, um, I don't know if there are any additional comments on the main motion. Are there any? We want to go ahead and vote on the main motion?
I'd just like to reiterate, I think the voters will be watching who's attending and when they're not attending. And I, I agree with, um, the, with, um, the others that, you know, we're all answerable to the voter. So we have to use our own judgment, whether we use the virtual option and when we use it.
Mr. Chairman, just.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just to the record is clear, I stated that M C had adopted electronic meeting ordinance. They have not. It was only the town of Bluffton based on our knowledge at this time.
Thank you for that clarification. All right. Are there any other comments on the main motion, which we're about to vote on? All right, here now, we're going to obviously have to call a roll. And, uh, I don't have a list of people who are, who are present. So I'm just going to have to go down the list and figure it out myself. First one is Mr. Glover on the main motion.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Glover votes yes on the main motion. Uh, then we have Mark Lawson on the main motion.
Mark Lawson, yes.
Okay. Uh, then we have Mr. Passaman on the main.
Yes.
Okay. Good gracious.
Help you out, Paul. This is McKellen. I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. McKellen. Uh, Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Herbeshawn?
No.
Herbeshawn votes no. Okay. Um, Mr. Rodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to comment as I vote, if I might, uh, I don't think I've missed a meeting in three, 300 meetings since I've been on council. I have the longest drive. I, I don't, we only have about 20 meetings a year. Congress, you have to be there to vote, I believe. South Carolina General Assembly, I believe they have to be there to vote. So I will oppose this.
So you will vote what?
No.
Mr. Rodman votes no. Okay. Uh, who am I missing here? Mr. Dawson, have you voted yet?
No, I haven't. And I'm voting yes.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Glover? All right, Mr. Glover already voted. Sorry.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Cunningham, thank you, please.
And I vote no.
Okay, Mr. Cunningham votes no. Is there anyone else who hasn't voted other than me? All right. So the chair votes yes. So what do we have, uh, Ms. Brock?
Seven yes, three no.
Okay, so the motion passes. We move it on to council. Uh, that brings us to item number 12, which is an ordinance to levy and impose a 1% local options, sales tax and use tax with the Beaufort County. Uh, uh, person to section four dash 10 dash 10 and sequel of the sub defend, I'm sorry, to define a specific purpose of the tax to impose condition.
Is Paul having trouble with his, um, internet? He looks to be frozen.
I'm not sure. Uh, I think he is frozen, but I can't tell if it's an internet issue.
It, it appeared that way based on the way he was cutting out.
Yeah.
For the end of mine, that it, the connection was slowing down. So who's the, uh, vice chair of the committee? Maybe we could just, uh, is that person on?
It's probably Joe. I don't know that we do have a vice chair.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, um, I'll continue on till he comes back on. Okay. Um, the municipalities.
Joe, I'm back.
Okay.
Back. Sorry about that. Um, just a couple of comments. This has been a longstanding topic of discussion. It goes back a number of years. I'm not exactly sure how many. Um, and I think everyone understands that this is of particular interest to the municipalities. Um, and we, uh, we had a, a meeting of the mayors, uh, a little over a year ago and at, uh, in Bluffton at the recreational center. And I think all members of council were there at that time. I'm pretty sure they were. And we had a, had a, I guess what you call a straw vote. Uh, I don't think it was binding, but it was, I don't know. I don't recall. We have to look, but we had a vote and, uh, 100% of the members of council, uh, agreed to put it on the, on, on, on a ballot. I don't remember which ballot. So, not only have we had many, many years of discussion, we also have had some commitments along the way by this body. And, uh, so we have to keep that in mind as we move forward. So there, I don't know if everyone understands the technical aspects of this, but the technical aspects are that, um, it's, uh, the proceeds are divided, I think roughly 70, 30. It may vary a point or two and, uh, 70% going to, uh, tax abatement, evoluent tax abatement and the 30% being distributed among the municipalities and the county to, for general fund for to do whatever, whatever we, we are, there are, are counterparts on the municipal councils, uh, deemed to be appropriate. Um, so I have supported this from the beginning. I, 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 I feel like, I know the municipality, for the municipalities, this is a source of revenue that, that, that they, they can't get anywhere else. And, uh, and, but what, but the real reason I support it is that it really is a wash because, or maybe it's better than a wash because if, it all depends on how much of the sales tax is paid by non-residents, visitors and vacationers. And, um, you know, I've heard numbers as high as 40, 50%. I've heard numbers as low as 30%. So somewhere in there, but 30% is the break even point. If we get 30% or more from, from our, uh, visitors and tourists and, uh, then, um, and, and we get 70% back as property, uh, property tax abatement. To me, it's a win-win. But anyway, I know others look at it differently, but that's how I look at it. So, I'll ask for a motion, uh, for item number 12 on the agenda, please.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Mr. Passman makes a second. All right, we are in discussion.
Uh, Stu, can you explain your, um, Excel sheet that you sent out to everyone?
I, I will. And, and also it does seem to me as part of the motion, we have to say whether, which referendum to be on, whether it's going to be on, uh, 21 or the 22. But Paul can come back to that. Um, okay. What, what I did, and in fact, uh, Sarah or whoever's got this, if you could go to the other tab first. Okay. And maybe make it slightly larger in case people haven't, uh, can't see it. But essentially what I did is I went, looked at, um, where else this is being done? And so this is kind of a snapshot of what's happening across the county. And what I've listed there is the counties that are more or less the large counties, more or less the tier ones. And I won't go through them all, but you can see there's three of them, including ourselves that do a transportation one. We got three that are doing, uh, capital. Uh, we got actually three that are doing some form of an educational penny. Uh, we only have two that are doing lost at this point of the major counties. Now, I'd say most of the smaller counties around the state, uh, have this. So the majority of the counties have lost. But, uh, it's a very small number of the larger counties. And then Myrtle Beach actually has one that's folds money back into tourism. Um, and, and, uh, so I, I guess my, as I look at this particular one, it seems to me, uh, that we probably need maybe even a staff recommendation, but certainly some analysis because, um, we've got roughly, uh, about a billion dollars worth of transportation items that we're looking at in the next year or next 10 years. And I think the number on the capital side is probably going to be. And I think the number on the capital side is probably going to be a quarter of a billion. So i- in my mind, uh, lost is one of two or three possibilities that we have. And I think we need to rank those in our minds and decide which are the ones that are important as part of making this, uh, for this decision. Uh, personally, I tend to think that we, very difficult to go elsewhere for the roads and for the major capital. Uh, and therefore I, I tend to think that those would have a higher priority than lost. The, uh, the second slide, if you can go to that tab. And again, try to make a little bigger if you can. Um, and essentially what I did is I, I took, I assumed we're, be up around 40 million that we would get each year. Um, and I tried to just take a rough cut at who pays in and who pays out. And somebody could fine tune the numbers, but I think they're directionally correct. So on, on the money coming in, uh, essentially all the numbers I've seen over the years would suggest that the tourists, the visitors probably pay about a third. And the, uh, people that live here, businesses and so on, probably pay about two thirds. Obviously, we've got a lot of tourists, but they're not buying refrigerators and cars and things like that while they're here. In terms of where the, uh, money goes out, um, Paul's right, it's about 71%, I think. Uh, or it'd be 69% that goes for a tax relief. Um, there's about, uh, 11 million that would actually go to the government entities, including ourselves. And I divvied up on population. And there's a Robin Hood feature of this, that the state actually keeps 5% and distributes it to, uh, to other, uh, other counties. So as I, as I, I kind of put the, on the left-hand side inside the dotted box, I said, well, these are in millions of dollars. So, you know, if, if the tourists probably pay about 13 million in, um, and that probably doesn't hurt the hospitality industry too much. Um, but the, the big beneficiary is the second homeowners, the six percents. Um, because they're, they're probably going to get, uh, you know, a good 13 million of that, of that benefit. And then the state, of course, gets the, uh, gets the 2%. So, um, in terms of winners and losers, at the bottom of that, I think the hospitality industry loses a little bit. I think the second homeowners and the state are winners in that calculation. If you look at the right-hand side, that box, um, it'd be about 24 million, which would be the collections from residents. And, uh, they would get about 13 million back in, um, in tax relief. Um, and then the balance gets split on a population basis. So the county would get seven and the municipalities would get about four. Again, somebody could fine tune these numbers, but I think they're directionally correct. Um, it, it seems to me, uh, that the four percents, the residents tend to lose because they're, uh, paying a lot of money in and only getting a portion of it back in, uh, tax relief. Um, you know, the county does get seven in that calculation, but we've got plenty of ways to go raise equivalent amounts of money. And it becomes very regressive on the, uh, the, the low income people to have a, a sales tax. And the municipalities, then in this example, would get four million out of the four, they'd get 10%. And I do believe they have ways to go get they want to. If they want to raise money for the general fund, they can do it for ad valorem taxes and not be regressive. And, uh, they can also, uh, um, do referendums, just like the school board, if they want to raise money for, uh, for capitals. Uh, lastly, I guess I would say is that I do think that passage is a bit problematic. I think we have the uniform fee, uh, festering out there with Hilton Head, which I think will, uh, cause a lot of people to vote against it. Um, in the past, we've, uh, had county council, many members that voted against it. And it gets difficult to go to the public unless we're unanimous. I think last time around, we were five, five and one voted for it, only to keep it open for discussion. As I said, it's very regressive and I see it as a very short window to, to do it, uh, do it properly. So my, my thought would be that even if we send this forward, we ought to have staff give us some analysis of where we really need to raise money and what's the best way to raise it. So hopefully that gives you, uh, uh, the background, uh, Joe, of what, of what I put together and obviously open any question.
Thank you, Mr. Rodman, uh, who else?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, who, who is that? Oh, Mr. Herbeshawn, yes, sir.
Yeah, Stu, I, I appreciate that analysis, I, I agree with, uh, all of that. But a, a question for you, because here's what I'm wrestling with. The mayors want a way to raise funds for projects that they are looking to do. So in your opinion, how would we adequately address that?
Yeah, um, they, they certainly have the ability to go do a, uh, any, their own referendum if they want to raise money. And they do, it would do it on an ad valorem basis, which is really, um, not regressive. So it actually, uh, is not a penalty on those other folks. Also, if we were to do a countywide capital one, it certainly could earmark as part of that capital one, items that they want in their municipality. So for example, if Buford wanted a parking garage, rather than do lost to get money to do a parking garage, the parking garage could be part of the countywide capital. So I think those would be the two avenues, Chris, to, uh, raise money for the two funds that they might need.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, um, Ms. Howard.
Well, uh, I disagree about the capital tax. We've been through that twice that I remember, and it was a disaster both times about what the project list would be. Um, so it, it hasn't worked in the past to do it as a capital since tax, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard, I, I do have a couple of comments. First of all, I don't think this is a regret, I don't see this as a regressive tax. Because it's, we depend on the second homeowners, the vacationers to pay the, I don't know, I don't know, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but a very, very large percentage of our ad valorem tax, we depend on them. And when we threw school operations on them, plus 6%, remember, somebody who owns a second home is paying, uh, for an equivalent primary residence home is paying triple what they're paying, what the primary residence is paying. And that's assuming that they don't have a, a $50,000 exemption for, for being, uh, superannuated. Um, so obviously they're going to get more back in terms of a percentage of that money than the person in the primary homeowners, because the, they're paying more, a lot more taxes. So, and I think one of the, and this is also true of businesses. We've had a lot of problems over the years, once, uh, once Act 388 passed, explaining to the poor businesses why they're paying, uh, an inordinate amount of, of ad valorem taxes. So I don't accept that this is a regressive tax. I think it's, I think that that is to say the distribution, the process is, is regressive. I think it's very fair, because the people who are paying the majority of it are getting a larger share of it, as they should. Um, and as far as the capital is concerned, uh, you think about this, as Alice is correct, we've been down this road before. And what happens is you put the projects on there, and if Hilton Head doesn't like it, if it's in Buford and Hilton Head doesn't like it, they can outvote it. Uh, i- if, if it's in Buford, if it's in Hilton Head and the people in Buford, it doesn't, uh, well, I'll say Buford, I'm north, north doesn't, uh, agree with, they'll vote against it. So it becomes a matter of who has the votes, I mean, the majority of the votes. And, and so it's not a good, it's not a good way to fit, it's not even a reasonable way in my mind to, to put capital projects out there. Because you have to figure out a way that you're going to get votes from the north and the south. And so anyway, um, I won't, uh, I won't belabor this, but just to simply say, I don't think it's regressive. I think capital projects are a bad idea to so, to solve the problems for the municipalities. And I support the, uh, local option sales tax as written. Who else?
Mr. Chairman?
Um, Cunningham, yes, sir. Uh, do you want me to go? Yeah, um, quick question, maybe it's just educating myself on it. But from hearing the conversation between Mr. Herbeshawn and Mr. Rodman, let's say Bluffton wanted to put in a park. And if we did this tack, the lost, they could use the funds from that to build the park, correct? Their, their portion back. So, but then Mr. Rodman also went on to say that if they wanted to do a referendum on their own to build that park, they could as well. So it seems to me we're just playing the middle man and, uh, taking the brunt of, you know, for PR on their behalf.
Are you saying, are you saying that a municipality could do a referendum for a park? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I, that's what I'm asking from, uh, trying to clarify, is that what Mr. Rodman was saying? That if they needed to do a referendum for whatever project it is, I'm just using a park as an example. Um, but then if they called for the referendum, they're the ones that have to do the PR. Where if we go through loss, we're the ones that takes the PR off of them.
Well, actually, I don't agree with that either, because municipalities were doing, well, I assure you, all municipalities, well, possible except Hilton Head, I don't know. But the municipalities will be doing their own, a lot of PR, a lot of PR. In fact, we can't do PR for a referendum, so.
Okay, I just want a clarification.
Yes, Stu.
To, to answer the question, and I, I wasn't quite sure about this, so I actually asked Josh about it. He said the municipalities do have the right to do a referendum, uh, for whatever reasons they, they want to. And that falls down on an ad valorem basis, uh, like any other, uh, any other tax. So, yeah, they, they can do their own for whatever they want to, as big or as small as they want to.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Chris.
I think he's frozen, thank you. Um, so relative to the point about it being a regressive tax, generally speaking, um, folks who are on the lower end of the income spectrum are going to save less. And therefore they're going to spend the vast majority of the dollars that they earn. Those dollars, generally speaking, are going to be subject to whatever sales tax is out there. So basically every dollar that they earn is going to be taxed for most of them, right? Now, they're not going to be subject to those rebates, because a lot of those folks are living in rental properties, which are six percenters. And I guess the argument to that would be, well, then whoever owns that property is going to, you know, adjust the rent lower because they're paying less tax. That sounds good, but in practice, that's not going to happen. So these rebates are not going to be passed on to folks who are at the lower end of the spectrum. And the folks who are at the lower end of the spectrum are going to have, proportionally speaking, a large proportion of their, um, income tax because they spend it. So because of that, I think it is pretty regressive. I think sales tax is as regressive as it gets. The flip side of that is a sales tax, especially where we live, is going to be paid by a lot of out-of-towners, out-of-staters, that's great. Um, but for the folks who live and work in Buford County, you know, the regular working folks, um, especially the ones who are on the lower end of that spectrum, it's going to be very regressive for them, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Herbeshawn, somebody else had their hand up, I don't remember who it was, somebody did. I can't see everybody, so I apologize if, if your hand was up and I didn't see you. Okay, and no additional comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Passman.
Okay, um, three points. Point number one, the state is now looking at, um, the penny sales taxes that are out there. Uh, if you have a penny sales tax for transportation, currently you cannot have one for capital. They're trying to meld them together to allow communities to be able to do both of those at the same time. When you take a look at the state, the vast majority of this state does have lost. When you take a look at the coastline, though, the major counties along the coastline do not. Which is interesting, because that's where your tourism is, and they don't have lost. It, our, our municipalities are unanimous in that they would like to have the ability to have lost. We, as Paul eloquently said, we're going to put it on the, um, announce that it's going to be on a referendum to be held by the county, because that's our job. We do not do the advertising, marketing, we stay clear of this. This is going to have to be done by the municipalities through, um, citizen groups to determine whether or not the community wants to replace the current tax that we have with lost. Or if it is to be an additional one. Certain counties in this state are at the 8%, a good number of them. One is at 9% because they have lost, they have a transportation and they have a tourism tax. Um, so those, those are the facts that we have to deal with.
Thank you, Mr. Passment, uh, Ms. Howard?
Yes, um, Stu mentioned that we needed to have the, the year in the, in the, um, motion. But what's included in our package does say referendum, uh, November 2021. So I don't think I have to, um, amend my motion, because what's in the packet says 2021, is that correct?
Yes, that's what it was written for, um, Ms. Howard.
Okay, thank you.
If I may add one additional thing, as you all may know, and I may be out of place with this, but it's just something for the council to consider. Uh, we are in the midst of trying to do the ongoing update to our impact fees regarding schools and other items. We have sent draft copies of the intergovernmental agreements to all municipalities. I have inquired numerous times from those municipalities about the status of those. And I keep, uh, hearing that there's a letter coming from somewhere or someplace addressing all the concerns. Council might give some consideration to tying this, uh, continued approval of this vote, if you're inclined to do so, to the appropriate municipalities participating, uh, in the intergovernmental agreements on the impact fees in exchange for us placing lost on the ballot. So that's just something for you to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Greenway, that is an excellent idea, because, uh, I don't know what's going on in the individual municipalities, but my general impression is that, that they're slow walking, some of them are slow walking this thing, and that's a problem. I, I don't understand that, because, you know, we need schools, you know, we need all sorts of things from impact. We need roads, we need parks, we need libraries, we need all sorts of things, uh, or need money to spend on those things. And some of them are reluctant, and have been reluctant for, for years, decades to sign on to these things. And I've never understood that. So I think, I think that's a good point, because we have to, we also have to decide, I think it was, can't remember who mentioned it, but we have to decide, maybe it was Stu, we have to decide whether we want to put it on the 21 or the 22 referendum. And I certainly have some thoughts about that. Any additional comments before we move on to, uh, when? Uh, and, uh, and, uh, and discussion about, uh, Mr. Greenway's suggestion about, uh, making it contingent upon, uh, approving the, the, uh, impact base?
Mr. Chairman, um, yeah, thank you. I, I, I'm going to support the loss, um, because, um, ever since I got on council, the municipality's been asking for it. So, uh, I'm going to support it, uh, the question becomes when, I'm not too sure, um, was best at this time. But I would ask, um, I would not ask, but, uh, I will support the comment that, uh, Stu raised about, um, the staff weighing in on this, um, because we will, we will, we, we tasked the staff doing our, um, goal-setting, um, retreat to, to look at and to bring back to us, um, the capital needs for us for the next 10 years and means of, and ways of funding that. So in my mind, the, the transportation, uh, referendum, the lost referendum, um, and other means of raising money, 8%, et cetera, et cetera, ties into all of the total needs for Buford County for the next 20 years. And how does this fit into that schedule? Uh, that's where I am and would like to get more clarification as we move forward. But I would move, I would support moving this forward at this time, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Glover, um, anybody else?
Uh, I, I'll just add one more little thing. Yes, sir, um, thank you. The one other thing I would add is sort of what we talked about earlier, just because we can doesn't mean we should. Uh, just because some of the people around us have eight and 9% sales, doesn't mean we should be doing the same. A lot of these people are moving to this area because of our taxes, because they're so much lower than the areas they're coming from. Um, I, I just say we should take caution on that and be careful, just because other surrounding areas are doing it, doesn't mean that we should. I think Jasper, their property tax is 6% all the time, whether you're, uh, first, or it's your second home or your first home. Uh, doesn't mean that, you know, it, it runs better than Buford County. So I just think we should be cautioned to that.
Are, are you saying that primary residents in Jasper County pay 6%?
Isn't their property tax at 6% in Jasper? And Buford County is four?
I think you might be getting confusing sales tax with, uh, with, uh.
I understand, I'm just using it as an example of saying raising taxes doesn't always mean that it's the right thing to do. That's all I'm saying, but they're going to have to pay that sales tax when they cash out.
Okay, got it, thank you. Anybody else?
This is, this is not re, adding another. This is, this is not re- adding another tax. Our transportation tax is about to come off. And this would just be replacing that. It would not increase our tax base.
Thank you, Mr. Passman. Anybody else? Um, I do want to talk, yes, sir, Mr. Dawson. I see.
I, I think the part that is missing in this whole discussion is, uh, no one's talking about the fact that once we implement this, and if it passes, then it, 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 it stays on. I mean, it's not like, um, the, uh, capital sales tax where we set it for maybe a three-year or four-year term. Am I correct?
You're absolutely correct, and if we, if we on county council are approached to, uh, to put on a referendum to remove it, then we'll take that up just like we're taking this up. Yeah, I think Councilmember Rodman wants to say something, Chairman. Okay, I'm sorry, I can't see you.
Yeah, I, I would say this, um, a couple of things. Uh, I, I, I don't view this as replacing the transportation sales tax in the sense that I don't see that we have any alternative other than to do the transportation sales tax again, uh, if we're going to address the, all the, the roads needs that we have. Secondly, the point was made, this does go on forever. The mechanism to remove it is so unwieldy that, that nobody would ever remove it. So it is permanent, and therefore it becomes the single largest tax increase in the history of Beaufort County.
Thank you, Mr. Rodman. I, I don't, I don't agree that it has to be permanent because there is a, a methodology, uh, in the statute to remove it.
My point, Paul, was that it's almost impossible. Maybe we could ask staff to walk us through what it is. But I think there's a high petition, high number of people from petition standpoint to get it on the ballot, and I think that's the only way you remove it and to get, uh, whatever that percentage is, it's in the tens of thousands of people.
Fifteen, fifteen percent of the electorate has to ask to have it be removed. Now, what I don't understand, Stu, is you're saying that this is the largest tax increase. But the way lost works is whatever you collect in taxes, seventy-one percent of it has to be rebated as tax relief. So I don't follow the logic that it is the largest tax increase.
Well, maybe, maybe I misstated slightly, Joe. Uh, my sense was that if you're taking, if you're adding forty, fifty million a year forever, it becomes a large number. Now, relative to the, um, tax relief coming off, it's never been really clear to me that that always accrues to the people over time. And to me, it looks like it's more of another revenue stream. And, and most entities, including ourselves, will just go spend it. Um, I'm not sure what the mechanism is that guarantees that it, uh, goes back as a tax relief. But I, I probably need to be educated on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Rodman. Thank you, Mr. Passman. Is there anybody else?
Chris.
Chris, did you hear?
I do think it's important, in the context of this conversation, conversation now, if we could get a walkthrough of exactly what that repeal would look like and the various steps, I think that that would be helpful.
Yeah, there, there is a presentation that was done before Soloco, uh, that we can get hold of so that we can show, uh, council exactly the law, exactly how it goes into place, and exactly how it would come about. And if it is to be removed, the exact process that removes it as well as what the various lost taxes are, you know, who's doing it around the forty-six counties in this state. So, um, Eric, you, you have the ability to get that, don't you?
Yeah, we'll get that and send it out, everyone, and I'll provide additional information. We'll be, we'll be better prepared at council if you all want us to, um, to walk you through the repeal mechanism and do that presentation. We can certainly do that, uh, for, uh, the council meeting. Um, one of the things I'd like also point out is that, you know, with regards to sales tax issues, uh, regardless of what they are, whether it be transportation or lost or what have you. Um, there is a demand for services that always exist in a jurisdiction. And there's going to be always a demand for infrastructure improvements and things like that. With, with regards to laws, one of the advantages that I see is that those who own property here in the county stand to benefit, and I, we can all debate as to what, how, how significant the benefit would be. While those folks that are coming from outside of the county here on tourism, vacation, uh, spending money in our jurisdiction and buying things are assisting the full-time residents in, uh, providing services and paying for infrastructure and things like that that are demanded by our residents and by the people who are coming here to visit. So to me, it's a, it's a great balance. Uh, so, you know, I think Kurt wants to say something, so I'll turn it over to him.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, as to the two questions, I can answer them right now. The, uh, in order to rescind the tax, there has to be a petition of fifteen percent of the qualified electors of the county presented to county council. County council doesn't have an automatic mechanism to put the referendum on to take the tax away. It has to be done only on the request of fifteen percent of the electors, and then it's simply another referendum, and it's done in November. So that's how that would work. And as far as the requirement that, um, the money goes to the uh, property tax credit fund, uh, seventy-one percent of the collections go to the property tax credit fund, which is exactly as it sounds. It must be given in property tax relief. And then twenty-nine percent of the collections go to what's called the county municipal revenue fund, which is used by the county and the municipalities for various projects. Simple. Those two are points are simple.
Thank you, Kurt. Follow-up question. Um, so basically what I'm hearing is that, I mean, just for rough numbers, we'd have to get roughly thirty thousand people on a, on a, on a petition to say we want to repeal it, then it goes to a referendum. The question is, what does the petition look like? Is it as simple as, uh, you know, a form that's put up on the county website and people go on and sign it, or is this a situation where people have to go door to door and get physical signatures and then have them verified and, and all that sort of thing? Because I think that speaks to Stu's point about it being an unwieldy process. And that certainly would lend itself to a more difficult repeal.
You're right. It's a, it would be a more of the door-to-door process because, uh, it, it says the qualified electors. So the person has to be found to be a qualified elector if their signature is valid.
I have, I have another really stupid question. I'm sorry. The, the door-to-door process, how would that work on somewhere like Hilton Head where the vast majority of Hilton Head is gated?
Be difficult.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm going to weigh in on this. I think if, if people will have an opportunity, if we pass there, if the, if the voters pass this, then we'll, they will, will all have an opportunity to see whether we, we like it or we think it's effective or not. And I feel pretty sure that if the vast majority or even a minimum majority think that this is not a good deal, that they don't, won't have any trouble, uh, getting, uh, getting, uh, signature signed, and people in the gated communities can get their signature signed. And people outside the gated communities can get their signatures, their signature signed. So I don't, I don't see gated community being an issue because I've seen a lot of situations where people in gated communities get signatures. Not a big deal. So. All right, um, yes, Mr. Cunningham?
Um, about the signature thing, I can tell you guys from campaigning this last year and going door to door that anytime you are getting anybody to sign up, sell, or receive emails, um, you're getting information to them, it is considered soliciting. So whether it's gated or not, the only time you are allowed to go door to door and it's not considered soliciting if you are giving out info. But if we are trying to collect any type of signature, email, or information, it does fall in the soliciting category, which most neighborhoods in Beaufort County do not allow.
Are you saying that, uh, the people in gated communities can't go around and get signatures from their neighbors?
It does fall into solicitation, is what I'm saying. So if a neighbor wanted to complain, they could.
Individual community bylaws, whatever it is. I can't imagine that they won't allow them, their, their members to go, their residents to go around and knock on each other's doors if you're a resident. But anyway, that's.
All right, so may I, may I suggest that we, um, see if we can move this to council, number one. Number two, that we have a presentation ready so that everybody understands what, what lost is all about. Number three, that we tie it to the intergovernmental agreements for impact fees. And then we make the decision if it's going to be on, on a referendum in this November. And number four, it is then up to the municipalities, not us. We've done our due diligence. It, we're going to pass it to put it on a referendum. It will be up to the municipalities to gain the favor of passage of this through various citizen groups.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Passman. So we can, the, the part about making it contingent upon the passage of, of, um, impact fee, uh, member, what are they, MEMOs, Eric?
They, the intergovernmental agreements being signed by the municipalities.
Are they IGA's or MOUs?
IGA's.
Okay, uh, IGA's. We'll have to, I think we'll have to have an amendment for that. It's not in there. It's not in the language, is it, Kurt?
Yes, and that wouldn't, that wouldn't fit in this ordinance. It would be simply a matter of, um, intergovernmental relations, I think. It's not something to put in this ordinance.
We just need to communicate that to them, I think, and say, hey, we're doing this for you. Now do this for us.
Okay, what about, um, what about the year of the referendum, twenty, twenty-one versus twenty-two? Should that be in the ordinance or is that?
It is in the order. It's already in there, so we don't have to change that. It's already in. It says twenty.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, good. So good. This can be easier.
If you adopt this, it'll be on the ballot in November of this year.
November second.
Excellent. Okay. Uh, thank you, Joe, for that nice summary. It was excellent. Um, anybody else? Because I'm going to go ahead and call a question on this unless somebody has some additional thoughts. I'm hearing none now. Thanks to, uh, our clerk to council. I can now see everybody. And it wasn't her fault, by the way. It was my fault. Uh, so I'm going to call a question, and I'm going to start on my upper left, which is Mr. Passaman. Uh, how do you vote on this, sir?
Yes.
All right, um. Mr. McKellen?
No.
Uh, Mr. Dawson?
No.
Mr. Cunningham?
No.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Herbichon?
No.
Uh, Mr. Rodman?
No.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Uh, that's only eight people. Is that all we have here? Did I miss somebody?
Got ten, and you need to vote.
I have nine votes so far. I just need yours.
Oh, I vote yes. And who else hasn't voted?
Brian's not here.
That's it. It's tied five-five.
Okay, all right, tied five-five. So that means it fails. I mean, it fails to move forward to council because of a five-five tie. I believe that's correct. Am I right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. So now we move on to the next item, which is item number thirteen, which is a resolution authorizing the settlement of claims related to care environmental waste uh, disposal site. Um, Kurt, you want to speak to that a little bit?
Oh, we did that one.
We, we already did that one. The next issue is, next is to change the form of government, item thirteen.
What's wrong with my, I, I must have the wrong. Uh, let me see here. Oh, here it is. You're right. I had the, I had the old, uh, agenda. I'm sorry. The, the new agenda is uh, an ordinance to call for a referendum to allow the qualified electors, Beaufort County, South Carolina, to vote to retain the council administrator form of government or government or change, government or change to the council administrator form of government. I need a motion on that, please.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, Mr. Passman makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, we are now in discussion. I, I want to say something here because I, I've heard criticisms of us, uh, not just me, but all of us about this for not being more specific about why we want this. I'm not a, uh, a, a slander and libel attorney, but I know that there's a potential issue here. You can't, you have to be very careful of what you say. So I don't think, and Kurt, if you want to weigh in on this or not, that's fine. I just, I think we have to be careful on what we, what we say, but, uh, uh, anyway, that's just something I want to comment on. Additional comments? Yeah, Mr. McKellen?
Uh, what's this voted on, uh, in the recent past, and what was the outcome of that?
Uh, it was, and it did not pass, and I think that's one of the reasons I made the comment that I did. Because the people who supported it and were upset when it didn't pass uh, tended to blame us for not being more specific as to why, exactly why we want this to pass.
Do you remember when that vote was taken and what the percentages were?
I do not.
Anybody?
Well, it hasn't been on the ballot for, for many years, has it? At least six or seven.
Believe it was twenty-eleven, but I'm not positive.
Okay, that sounds right.
Stu, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I think it was back then, and then we actually voted to put it on the ballot in eighteen. And then we took it off because we didn't want to have, uh, referendum fatigue because we had the transportation sales tax on there. So yes, we, we voted twice to put it on and once to back it off again.
Does this say, if, is the, uh, ordinance say that it'll be on the twenty-one ballot, or do we have to stick that in there?
It is, it is scheduled for twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. All right, additional comments? Well, yeah, Stu?
Yeah, maybe somebody's correct me on the dates, but if, if we did it in twenty-two, it seems to me that that would be the time that the, uh, well, well, their terms run, I believe, until twenty-three.
Twenty, no, 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 twenty-two. They end in twenty-two.
Um, twenty-one, twenty-two. I, I, somebody check, I, I thought that they ran until twenty-three. I could be wrong about that.
No, because if we put it on twenty-one, it will go in effect in twenty-three. If we put it on twenty-two, it goes into effect in twenty-six.
I believe. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, that's correct, incorrect. I'm sorry. There's an attorney general's opinion in the research that says that since the auditor and treasurer take office in July following the November election, the way this mechanically works is follows. You have the referendum. If the referendum passes, then county council needs to adopt an ordinance to specify what council manager means, other than just accepting what the statutes say. And you've got the choice at that point in time as to whether to continue to elect the auditor and treasurer or change it to appointed positions. And the attorney general's opinion says that since they don't take office until June, you could put it on the twenty-twenty-two referendum and still change the form of government. They wouldn't get that automatic four more years of term because there, uh, they would just be pending or, or, uh, treasurer-elect, auditor-elect, since they wouldn't step in. So you have time to pass that ordinance to make it appointed.
Let me remind, let me hearken back to Mr. Rodman's comment about, uh, referendum fatigue. This has been booted off the referendum list at least in two thousand eighteen for that very reason, because we have no idea what we're going to need to put on there in terms of referendum in two thousand twenty-two. And it, I, I just don't want to see us be in a position where we, oh, where we say, oh, we've got too many refer, referendums, we have to boot one, and there it goes again. So, uh, so I don't, I, I do not support moving it forward to twenty-twenty-two. Yes, Stu?
Yeah, I, I, I kind, I'm kind of torn between. I see twenty-one as logical because it's fresh in our minds, and we can point to the disasters that we had with the tax bills. Um, on the other hand, you know, with the virus and time being short and, and getting people to promote it, twenty-one becomes kind of tight. So I, I think you could debate it either way. I'd probably come down slightly on the side of twenty-two. Uh, and also, I think twenty-two avoids having a special election unless we have a special election for something else. And, you know, that's a fifty, sixty thousand dollar expenditure if we're not doing a, uh, an election for other purposes.
Thank you, Stu. Anybody else? Okay, it sounds like everybody's got their mind made up. All right, I will, uh, call the question, and I'll start with, uh, who've I got here? Uh, Mr., Mr. Lawson, are you still with us? Okay, we'll come back to Mr. Lawson. Mr. Glover, are you still with us?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Glover votes yes. That's a yes, a vote yes, or a yes, you're with us? Mr. Glover votes yes. That's a yes, a vote yes or yes you're with us?
Both.
Okay, Mr. Lawson. You're on, there you go.
Yeah, Mark Lawson, yes.
All right, Mr. Rodman?
Yes.
Mr. Herbichon?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Cunningham?
No.
Uh, Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. McKellen?
No.
Mr. Passment?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. I don't, I don't know what the numbers were, but it looks like it passed, so.
Seven to three, seven to three.
Okay, that mattered past. And now that I have the correct agenda here, uh, we now ask for citizens' comments via Zoom, using the link and meeting information below. Okay, are there any citizens' comments? You know, there's nothing on this agenda that I can see about, about using Facebook. Is that something we want to talk about? I mean, as I understand it, there are several ways you can use Facebook. It's not just a, a simple, yes, we're gonna use Facebook. This has to do with, with public and private. I'm not, I'm not an expert, so.
Yeah, we're, we're not, I don't think we as a staff are prepared to do that today, and I don't know that that's an agenda item.
It is not an agenda item. Okay, fine. Thank you. You're absolutely right. All right.
Can I ask a question on that real quick, though?
Yeah, sure.
Um, I was under the impression after our last county council meeting that as long as our IT department was good to go with Facebook Live, that we were greenlighted for our next meeting.
Well, that's where it gets into the technicalities. We, we approved it in some form, but I don't know what form we're gonna end up using. And I think that's.
I think, I think it would be best for the chairman of the county council to have that discussion individually with council members because this is a non-agenda item that we're currently discussing.
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Greenway. All right, uh, no comments? All matters having been brought before this committee? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Councilmember McKellen, do you mind if we take like two minutes to allow broadcasting to swap things over and us?
Well, considering, considering the length of this meeting, I think it would be appropriate to take more than two minutes. So that everybody can have a break. And I would say that it's, what time is it now? It's two-thirty.